Evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 12th, 2020 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and I'll ask you to please join me in a moment of silent meditation or prayer. Thank you, everyone. This evening, we're honored by the presence of our Comptroller, Mr. Peter Francho. This Comptroller Francho has asked if he could give us the state of Maryland fiscal outlook for the year. Mr. Comptroller, are you there?
Hi, this is Emily Gontrum from Comptroller Francho's office. He should be joining momentarily. I do apologize for the delay.
No problem, Emily.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Julia, why don't we go forward with a couple of the proclamations?
Sure.
Oh, there he is.
He's coming on.
He's here. Good evening, Mr. Comptroller. There he is. Good evening, Mr. Comptroller. How are you? You're on mute.
Thank you, Jack, very much, and I guess I missed my nice introduction.
You did. You did. I can do it over if you'd like.
No, no, God forbid. Please don't. And thank you very much for everything. Julia, give my regards to the mayor when you talked to him and tell him, in my opinion, the acting mayor is doing a fabulous job.
Thank you, Comptroller. I will.
And all of your colleagues, Jack. I just want to apologize to everybody on behalf of government everywhere, not you guys. You've been terrific. But frankly, we dropped the ball on the coronavirus, and as a result, we're just paying the devil right now as far as the economic consequences. And I wish I could be super enthusiastic and optimistic about the next six months, but I think we're going to have some continued stormy weather to go through. And let me give everyone my cellphone number in case you need to get hold of a real-life statewide official on the Board of Public Works. It's 301 area code, 332-1961. I give that out, and I obviously will respond to any voicemail or text message. But if I don't actually pick the phone up at 10 o'clock at night, if you're calling me, my apologies. But I want to be able to, wherever we can be of service, and I've got Emily Gontrum on the phone. Emily, are you there?
Yes.
Yeah, so Emily used to be a staff person for the MAKO, and now her allegiances are strictly for MML. That's what I like. And she is available, and Emily, if you could post your contact info. So anyone that's got an issue, be it a constituent tax problem or something that we might be helpful with with some other agency, let us know. And please, continue the Shop Local Salisbury. That kind of effort is just so crucial right now. And I don't mean to say that your budget and the county budget and the state budget are second priorities. They aren't. They're very important. I understand how everyone's nervous about the tax revenues. But my main focus right now is on the budgets of small businesses. And to the extent you can continue to promote Main Street and Salisbury, I would be eternally grateful. We're going to lose 40 to 50% of our hospitality, small businesses, restaurants, et cetera. That's already happened. We're going to have a lot of, unfortunately, bad economic consequences to this coronavirus, which apparently has not been corralled. And hopefully, it will be in the near future, but we have the flu season coming up. We've got 1.1 million Marylanders who filed for first-time unemployment. And frankly, the revenue estimates are a mess right now. You know, we have to follow the economic data we're given. And the fact that the feds had a very successful, and let me emphasize that because I'm kind of tight with the dollar, and I was stunned at how much money they allocated for the first stimulus. It was $2.2 trillion. Just to give you an idea of how much that is, if you took $2.2 trillion and put them end to end, they would stretch from Earth all the way to the sun, all the way around the sun, all the way back to Earth. So we're talking about just a god-awful amount of money. We're not talking millions or billions. We're talking trillion here. That helped. I was a little skeptical about it, but it has helped immeasurably. Almost 70% of our businesses in Maryland benefited from the Paycheck Protection Plan, the unemployment subsidies, and the stimulus checks that were sent. So the problem there is that, as successful as it was, it ended, and Congress can't get its act together right now for a second stimulus, which I would support because of the success of the first one. But because of the success of that, our revenue estimates got all screwed up because we thought people, when they went on unemployment, would pay a lot less tax. Instead, they were kept more or less on the salaries and wages that they were on, even if they weren't working because of the federal stimulus. And we subtracted the income tax from that, as we normally do. So we kind of stayed more or less the same. The problem is, if we don't get a second stimulus, or if the coronavirus is still going through our communities nationally, we're going to have billion-dollar shortfalls in our state budget, which obviously will trickle down to you. So I don't know. I don't quite know what to say about the revenue estimates, except they were enormously volatile. And we really can't trust anything until the December revenues come out. Emily will get those to you just as soon as they're public. Those are the revenue estimates that the governor and the legislature leaders will use for their budget deliberations starting in January. So we'll have a little better feel in December on what the coronavirus situation is and what the second stimulus situation is. And obviously, the November elections, thank goodness, will be behind us. So let me encourage you to, you know, we have our Salisbury office on South Salisbury Boulevard, our satellite office there open. If there's any tax-related issues, make sure your folks are aware that they can walk over there, make an appointment, I think. We're also been the single state office advocating that the $586 million fund balance from June 30th at the state level be immediately put into a small business relief fund for Maryland. You know, 70% of businesses benefited from the federal relief plan. Only 5% of Maryland businesses have benefited from the state relief plan. Why? Because it's been very small. It's been poorly implemented. Nobody knows how to exactly get money out of it. And right now, they have committed more than twice the money that they had to commit initially. So I'm suggesting we spend the $585, or I guess it's $585.8 million, fund balance immediately on these small businesses. If you guys wanted to send a letter to Governor Hogan, I get along very well with him. We just have an honest disagreement about this need to immediately help, as in yesterday, a lot of small businesses on Main Street with, you know, very little application and red tape. We just need to get the money out to our businesses. You know which ones they are that have a chance for survival. Some of them are unsavable. They're already closed permanently. But the ones that can make it through to February and March, we need to get them some money right now, in my humble opinion. So let me stop there. Congratulate all, Jack, all of your colleagues. I know everybody has worked very hard in Salisbury to make ends meet. And congratulations on the budget, which I think is not asking for a tax increase, like everybody in Montgomery County, my home county is. So you're doing the right things down there on the Lower Shore. Let me turn it back to you, Jack, and sorry for the rambling nature.
No problem, Mr. Comptroller. Thank you very much. We appreciate what you do for the Eastern Shore, for sure. And we can't wait for you to come back and see what's been accomplished in spite of COVID downtown and the surrounding area.
How is the revitalization going?
Well, it's going very well. Under Julia's leadership, we haven't skipped a beat. We now have our new roundabout. We have, Main Street is completely redone now. And a lot is happening, and a lot's going on, and we look forward to having you come down and enjoy it with us.
Excellent. I would love to do that. I hate Zoom, so that's why I put my high school picture up. I'm sorry. I just keep looking at myself whenever I see myself up there, so forgive me for that. But yes, if there is a ribbon-cutting, I'll be there. I'd love to be there. It's such a great project.
We'll get with Emily, and we'll give her the information on the ribbon-cutting for Main Street, so.
Fabulous.
All right.
Questions? Any questions from folks, or comments, or suggestions, or?
Julia, comments or questions?
Thank you for your support. We appreciate you being here, and we'll be sure to get you that invite.
Yeah, well, if you decide to write something to Governor Hogan, please be respectful, because he's got a different point of view, which is, we need to save all this money at the state level and put it aside for untold emergencies coming down the road. I say very respectfully, Governor, we need to get this money now. It's just sitting in a checking account at the state level, gathering mold and dust, and our small businesses are hanging on by their fingernails. So he, you know, I can kind of see where he's coming from, and I'm not even suggesting what I used to, which was go into the rainy day fund, although it's raining very hard. That's $1.2 billion he can keep in reserve. But this $586, if you cared to or have an opinion on it, please drop him a line and say, you know, we love you dearly, but could you please get some money where it's most needed right now? If you can't, I understand. Don't worry about it. I don't want to get you guys in hot water.
We can do that on our own, so there's no problem. Thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Comptroller, and Emily, thank you very much for all you do, too.
Okay, make sure you stay in touch now, and just keep doing what you're doing. Salisbury is just a cracker, Jack. Wonderful area. The city is, I think, benefited by everybody on the council. And, you know, you know my feelings about Mayor Day. He's got a great future ahead of him. I'm talking statewide future, so. But don't have him run against me, please. That's a joke, guys. I'm kidding. Jack, thank you very much for being a great leader, and let me know where I can be helpful. And Emily, make sure everybody's informed about the Board of Public Works, and et cetera.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, have a good session. Take care, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, we really appreciate the Comptroller being on. He's been a big supporter of the Eastern Shore and certainly for the city of Salisbury. Couple more proclamations. Our acting mayor, you have the floor.
Good evening, council and guests. First up is our proclamation for declaring today Indigenous Peoples' Day. And hopefully, you got a chance to watch the video that we made over the weekend and put that out. And I would like to start off by saying we do have a few folks from the Human Rights Advisory Committee, and they put this recommendation forward for us to declare today Columbus Day Indigenous Peoples' Day. So I do want to thank Shalera and Laura Bosland, and I don't know who else is on here from Human Rights Advisory Committee. Appreciate all of your support and dedication. So whereas Columbus Day is observed annually on the second Monday in October to recognize the October 12th, 1492 landing of the Italian explorer Christopher Columbus in the Americas, marking Europeans' first contact with the New World. And this contact began centuries of settlements on lands already long occupied by Native peoples of the Americas, indigenous peoples who experienced conquest, enslavement, displacement, and disease which decimated their populations. And indigenous peoples displaced on the Eastern Shore likely included Lenape, Pohonton, Piscataway, Wycomico, Choctaw, Tukahoe, Pokemoke, and other Algonquin Native Americans. And it is important to acknowledge and to be aware that one event may be viewed from more than one perspective. Columbus arriving in the New World is generally celebrated as a positive event, yet many indigenous peoples have wounds that still run deep today. And American Indians in Berkeley, California organized the first Indigenous Peoples' Day in 1992 at the 500th anniversary of Columbus's first voyage. And Indigenous Peoples' Day honors the past, present, and future of Native peoples throughout the United States, recognizing the legacy and impact on colonialism on Native communities while celebrating the culture's contributions and resilience of contemporary Native peoples. And to date, 14 states and the District of Columbia, more than 130 cities, and growing numbers of school districts observe Indigenous Peoples' Day in addition to or in place of Columbus Day. And in 2020, it is especially important to recognize indigenous peoples, their history and cultural identity, because Native Americans have been disproportionately impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. And the city of Salisbury and its Human Rights Advisory are committed to protecting and advocating for justice, human rights, and the dignity of all people who live, work, and visit here, and supporting the principles contained in the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, endorsed by the United States on December 16, 2010, by President Barack Obama. And the city of Salisbury recognizes the Human Rights Advisory Committee for its insightful recommendation that the city reimagine Columbus Day as an opportunity to celebrate, memorialize, and honor indigenous heritage and resiliency by ceremonially observing Columbus Day as Indigenous Peoples' Day going forward. Now therefore, I, Julia Glan, City Administrator of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim October 12th, 2020, the second Monday in October 2020, the second, and each year after, as Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Thank you, Julia. I thank the members of the committee that are on. I see Sharala. I see Laura. I'm not sure who else is on here, but thank you very much for your recommendations. And let's proceed to the next proclamation, and you can pronounce it because I can't. I've been practicing.
Well, I read it. It's ingrained in my brain from the last time I read it, I think last year, because I had to read it so many times, so it's in there, which is important. So whereas dysautonomia is a group of medical conditions that result in a malfunction of autonomic nervous system, which is responsible for automatic bodily functions such as respiration, heart rate, blood pressure, digestion, temperature control, and more. And some forms of dysautonomia are considered rare diseases such as multiple system atrophy and pure autonomic failure, while other forms of dysautonomia are common, impacting millions of people in the United States and around the world, such as diabetic autonomic neuropathy, neurocardiogenic syncope, and postural orthoscopic syndrome. And some forms of dysautonomia can be very disabling, which can cause social isolation, stress on families of those impacted, and financial hardship, while other forms of dysautonomia can result in death, causing tremendous gain and suffering for those impacted and their loved ones. And dysautonomia impacts people of all ages, gender, race, or background. And increased awareness about dysautonomia will help patients get diagnosed and treated earlier, save lives, and foster supportive individuals and families coping with dysautonomia in our community. And Dysautonomia International, 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that advocates on behalf of patients living with dysautonomia, encourages communities around the world to celebrate Dysautonomia Awareness Month each October. And it is important to recognize the contributions of professional medical community patients and family members who are working to educate our citizenry about dysautonomia. Now therefore, I, Julia Glan, City Administrator of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim October 2020 as Dysautonomia Awareness Month. And I'm not sure if there is somebody on representing this group tonight.
There is someone from the group. Could you please identify yourself so that Julia can unmute you? I guess not. Okay, thank you. And we have one more proclamation tonight.
Yes, we do. And I do want to highlight Sandy Brown, who is with us from Midshore Probono. So whereas Midshore Probono is a nonprofit organization that was founded in 2005 by a small group of dedicated and compassionate local judges and attorneys who recognize the overwhelming need for basic civil legal services for low-income people. And it was the first regional probono organization in Maryland dedicated to connecting private attorneys with the most disenfranchised residents in need of civil legal representation. And Midshore Probono's core values of integrity, service orientation, compassion, professionalism, respect, dignity, and collaboration underwrite its vision for empowering all people on the Eastern Shore to resolve civil legal matters. And Midshore Probono works hand-in-hand with local organizations to break down cultural, geographic, and economic barriers to the civil justice system for the area's poorest residents in Easton, Maryland, where it is based, and also in Chestertown in Salisbury, Maryland, the locations of its two satellite offices. And the American Bar Association Standing Committee on Probono and Public Service initiated in 2029 the annual observance of Probono Week to highlight the increased need for probono services nationally and honor the work of warriors who donate their services throughout the year. And the 2020 National Celebration of Probono takes place the week of October 25th through 31st, 2020, with this year's theme, Rising to Meet the Challenge: Probono Response to COVID-19. And the state of Maryland choosing to celebrate probono, not just a week, but the entire month of October, makes it an even more opportune time to recognize Midshore Probono's outstanding efforts in making civil legal representation more accessible to those who might otherwise face great difficulty in securing them. Now therefore, I, Julia Glan, City Administrator of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim October 2020 as Midshore Probono Month. And I do want to say that Sandy has been a great partner with us as we have put together the Vulnerable Populations Work Group. Her and her team have been coming to our meetings and staffing events and making sure everybody knows how available their resources are. So thank you, Sandy.
Thank you so much.
Sandy, if you'd like to make a couple of comments, please do.
Yeah, I would love to thank the city of Salisbury. We've been living down there for the past couple of years. We had to relocate and talk about our partnerships. I want to recognize a couple of people on the call. So Shalara at Wraparound Maryland, they have taken us in, so now we have a new office to welcome our clients and other partners. So we're very excited to be sharing space with a fabulous partner in Wraparound Maryland. And I will let you know, Julia, that you've got one of my interns, Johanna Cooper. So she spent the summer with us, and we're so grateful to Salisbury University for giving us such fabulous interns over these past couple of years. And notwithstanding COVID, we hope to continue to keep that relationship and partnership going. And this is really wonderful for us, and thank you so much. You guys are unbelievable and very grateful. So thank you.
Thank you, Sandy, for all that you do. Okay, at this time, I'll call for a motion in a second to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved.
Second, Ms. Blake and Mr. Boda. All those in favor of the legislative agenda, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The vote is 5-0. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
Good evening. On tonight's consent agenda, we have the September 21st, 2020 Work Session Minutes, September 21st, 2020 Closed Session Minutes, September 28th, 2020 Legislative Session Minutes, Resolution Number 3067, approving the reappointment of Mary Buffington to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee for term ending October 2023, Resolution Number 3068, approving the reappointment of Dr. Neil Carey to the Ethics Commission for term ending October 2025, Resolution Number 3069, approving the reappointment of David Scheid to the Friends of Poplar Hill Mansion for term ending November 2023, and that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Nichols. I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The vote is 5-0. I'll entertain a motion in a second for the award of bids.
So moved.
Second.
We'll give it to Ms. Jackson and Mr. Boda, I heard. Good evening, Mrs. Miller.
Good evening, President Heath and members of the council. So if you'll notice, I changed the format up just a little bit. I have one cover page for three different awards. The Department of Procurement received three separate requests from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to solicit bids from qualified and experienced contractors to furnish all labor, materials, and equipment necessary for the following projects. So there's three projects this evening to award. The first is Invitation to Bid, or ITB Number 21-108. That's the Warwick Community College Water Tower painting and logo installation. The scope of work on this bid included the exterior painting of the water tower, the exterior logo application, and the interior painting of the non-wet areas of the water tower located at the Warwick Community College. It was publicly bid on July 27th. We opened bids on August 27th, and we'd like to make an award to Central Painting and Sand Blasting at a cost of $350,000. The second item is Invitation to Bid, Number 21-109. That's the Camden Street Pedestrian Bridge construction. The scope of that work on that included construction of a pedestrian bridge and access ramp near Camden Street, crossing over the Wycomico River from West Market to West Carroll. The bid was publicly distributed on July 13th. Bids were opened on September 4th. We'd like to make the award to MerTech from Salisbury, Maryland, in the cost of $515,576.40. The last item in your packet is Invitation to Bid, Number 21-112, the Park Water Treatment Plant Roof Replacement. This scope of work included the replacement of the slate roof and gutters at the Park Water Treatment Plant on North Park Drive. The bids were posted on August 5th. They were opened on September 8th, and we'd like to make an award to Alden Bailey Restoration Corporation in the amount of $184,859. For all bids, the city followed standard bidding practices by publicly posting the solicitations on the city of Salisbury's procurement portal and the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace Advantage. The departmental memos do provide a recap of the pricing submitted by bid and by vendor. The Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to award these contracts to the lowest responsive and responsible bidders as indicated in the departmental memos.
Thank you. Questions or comments about these three awards? Mr. Boda?
Nothing about the bids or awards, but I do like the new format. It looks good, and it makes it a lot easier to read and understand, so good job on that.
Thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
I don't want to repeat. I concur with Mayor. It does make it a lot more simpler.
Thank you.
Ms. Blake?
No questions.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
I do want to make a note, I think, Mrs. Miller. I think that we set a new record for the variance in the bids on the first one. I don't know if that was a typo, the $1 million one, rounded up, but that's crazy.
No.
That is certainly the biggest difference, I think, that we've ever seen.
It was not a typo.
Okay, all right. Since there are no more questions, we'll now call the motion. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The award of bids are voted on and approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution number three zero seven zero.
So moved. Second.
Jackson? Ms. Blake? Ms. Glans?
Well, for you is Resolution number three zero seven zero, a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, accepting the donation of apparatus and equipment from the Volunteer Fire Company Station Two and Sixteen for the Salisbury Fire Department to use in efforts to enhance its capabilities in providing the effective and efficient delivery of fire rescue and emergency medical services and to improve the quality of life for the citizens of Salisbury and Salisbury Fire District. Whereas volunteer members of the Salisbury Fire Department constantly seek to enhance the department's capabilities in the effective and efficient delivery of public safety services through the contributions of equipment and apparatus to the city. And whereas funds appropriated to the volunteer corporations have been expended by the Salisbury Fire Department, Fire Department Station Two and the Salisbury Fire Department Station Sixteen to purchase various apparatus and equipment with a total value of two hundred and sixty eight thousand, five hundred and twenty four and ninety four cents. And whereas the volunteers wish to donate or gift all assets to the City of Salisbury Fire Department for inclusion in its inventory for emergency vehicles and equipment. And whereas both the bar chief and mayor have recommended that the city accept the donation of these vehicles and equipment. And whereas the city's gift policy requires that such gifts can only be accepted with the approval of council.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Blake?
No questions.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
And I would like to thank the volunteers. This is a tremendous gift. It's not the first and hopefully will not be the last. They've done a great job in supporting the, uh, the City of Salisbury's firefighting effort, and we thank them for that. I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution number three zero seven zero, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Resolution number three zero seven zero passes by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two six two zero for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake? And Ms. Jackson? Mr. Tillman, good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend Chapter twelve point three six entitled Sidewalk Cafes of the Salisbury Municipal Code to amend the requirements for sidewalk cafes. Whereas the ongoing application administration enforcement of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code demonstrates the need for periodic review, evaluation, and amendment. And whereas the City of Salisbury desires to require all applications for a sidewalk cafe seating area to include an inspection and approval by the city fire marshal to ensure compliance with the city's fire protection code prior to the issuance of a permit. And whereas the City of Salisbury has adopted the State Fire Prevention Code with certain local amendments. And whereas there has been a recent increase in the number of sidewalk cafes in the city, and the City of Salisbury desires to update the requirements for sidewalk cafes to ensure better oversight and safety of all sidewalk cafes. And whereas the City of Salisbury would like to amend the chapter to update the requirements and process by which sidewalk cafes are permitted, now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury, that Chapter twelve point three six of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code be amended as follows. Chapter twelve point three six sidewalk cafes, under definitions, we have the, uh, under twelve point three six point oh one zero, the first is A, sidewalk cafe means any area situated on a public sidewalk where food, refreshments, and/or alcoholic beverages are sold by a restaurant, delicatessen and/or ice cream shop for public consumption at tables or counters located on the public sidewalk fronting the operating establishment. Subparagraph B, street fixtures means physical objects located within a public sidewalk, such as streetlights, trees, signs, parking meters, and planters. Under twelve point three six point oh two oh, permit required, A, a person shall not construct, maintain, use, or operate a sidewalk cafe on a public sidewalk without first obtaining a permit as provided for in this chapter. Under B, an application for a sidewalk cafe permit shall be made to the Director of Infrastructure and Development on forms provided by the director. The application shall be made by the owner of the food service facility establishing the sidewalk cafe. In addition, an application may be required to be filed with the Historic District Commission. The application for use of the public right-of-way for a sidewalk cafe should be from a food service facility located on private contiguous property. In the event the outdoor air cafe area is not contiguous to the food service facility, it must be located within twenty-five feet of the storefront of the associated food service facility. And adjoining property owners and businesses will be notified of the permit application. The city may not be able to grant exclusive use of the sidewalk cafe if there are additional food service facilities within twenty-five feet of the business applying for the sidewalk cafe permit. Under subparagraph C, a sidewalk cafe permit shall be for one year from March first of each year until the last day of the following February. An annual fee of fifty dollars shall be paid with the permit application. Under D, sidewalk cafe permits are not transferable. In the event of the transfer of ownership of the food service facility, the new owner must reapply for a permit. Subparagraph E, the city may suspend or revoke a permit for violations of this section, conditions of the permit or other applicable city, county, state, or federal laws. Permittee is required to make any and all repairs to damage caused to the city right-of-way and sidewalk cafe, that, excuse me, and sidewalk cafe at the expiration of the permit period. Under twelve point three six point oh three oh, operating standards, A, no part of a sidewalk cafe area shall encroach upon any part of the sidewalk frontage on any adjacent premises, right-of-way, or alley. Under B, a sidewalk cafe shall comply with all building, health, safety, fire, zoning, and environmental standards applicable to such uses. Under C, a sidewalk cafe shall not sell, serve, or allow consumption of alcoholic beverages on its sidewalk without first obtaining the required license from the Wycomico County Liquor Board. Uh, alcoholic beverages shall be served on the sidewalk cafe only in conjunction with the foods, with the service of food. A public eating establishment shall not sell, serve, or allow consumption of alcoholic beverages at its sidewalk cafe after the establishment closing time. Under D, the following are prohibited in the cafe area: accumulated trash, and refuse, storage, advertising banners, outdoor entertainment, music, and loudspeakers. Under subparagraph E, all cafe seating shall be removed from the cafe or secured in the area no later than an hour after the business closes daily. Under F, the affected portion of the sidewalk shall be cleaned by the owner of the sidewalk cafe each business day that the sidewalk cafe business is in operation. Under G, a sidewalk cafe must comply with any conditions imposed by the city in connection with the issuance of a sidewalk cafe permit. And H, sidewalk cafe must close at the same time as the permitted business. Permittee must ensure that all patrons do not linger or loiter in the sidewalk cafe once business has closed. Design standards under twelve point three six point oh four oh, A, the permittee shall allow a minimum of five feet of unobstructed area for pedestrian foot passage between the outer edge of the sidewalk curb or designated sidewalk area and the area occupied by the permittee. B, sidewalk cafe furniture shall be simple in character, constructed of wood and/or painted metal. The only furniture permissible are tables, chairs, and umbrellas, which are intended for outdoor use. All portions of umbrellas must be contained entirely within the seating area and must have at least seven feet of clearance over the sidewalk when extended. The only wording or advertisement permissible on umbrellas is the name of the restaurant associated with the sidewalk cafe. Under C, a scaled sketch plan shall be filed with the permit application showing all street fixtures affected, including property lines fronting in the sidewalk in which the sidewalk cafe will be located, sidewalks, street curb lines, lighting, trees, planters, parking meters, street signs, fire hydrants, and proposed location of the outdoor cafe and enclosure. Any plans to anchor the enclosures in the public sidewalk must be approved by the Department of Infrastructure and Development. Under D, railings and/or fencing for the enclosed cafe area shall be approved by the Salisbury Historic District Commission and Department of Infrastructure and Development, if applicable. Under E, the sidewalk cafe seating area shall be inspected and approved by the city fire marshal for compliance with the city's fire prevention code. Under F, no portion of the sidewalk cafe, including furniture and fixtures, shall obstruct view and/or access to the hydrants, streetlights, street signs, telephones, mailboxes, transit stops, or any other public service facility on the sidewalk area or adjacent street. Under G, no sidewalk cafe may be permanently located within the sidewalk area, except that the sidewalk cafe boundaries must be delineated by the use of barriers such as railings or fencing. Any barriers must be approved and permitted by the Department of Infrastructure and Development. Any portions of barriers above forty-two inches in height must provide sight lines into, through the sidewalk cafe area and must be secured in a manner that is acceptable to the Department of Infrastructure and Development. Under H, all portions of canopies must be contained entirely within the seating area and must have at least nine feet of clearance over the cafe area when extended. The only wording or advertisement permissible on a canopy is the name of the restaurant associated with the sidewalk cafe. Canopies must be reviewed and approved by the City of Salisbury Infrastructure and Development Department, Historic District Commission, and City Fire Marshal. Any proposed alteration to the sidewalk cafe after the permit is issued must be reviewed and approved by the City of Salisbury Infrastructure and Development Department, Historic District Commission, and City Fire Marshal. Under twelve point three six point oh five oh, infrastructure, uh, excuse me, insurance and indemnification, the sidewalk cafe permittee shall fully ensure, indemnify, and hold harmless the City of Salisbury and its officers, agents, and employees from and against any and all claims and damages in any way arising out of the acts or omissions of the permittee or its employees in the construction, operation, maintenance, use, placement, or condition of the sidewalk cafe. An applicant for a sidewalk cafe permit shall provide proof of five hundred thousand dollars premises liability insurance before a permit may be issued or renewed under this chapter. Twelve point three six point oh six oh, violations and penalties. The provisions of this chapter shall be enforced by the City of Salisbury building official or his or her designee. A person who continues to violate this chapter after written notice to take corrective action is guilty of a municipal infraction and shall be fined two hundred and fifty dollars for the first offense and shall be fined up to five hundred dollars for each subsequent offense. Each day a violation exists shall be a separate offense. In addition, the building official may revoke or suspend a permit issued pursuant to this chapter after repeated infractions in any twelve-month period. And that is it.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
And I have no questions or comments. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two six two zero for the second reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Resolution number two six two zero is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two six two one for the first reading.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Boda? Ms. Jackson? Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. This is an ordinance of the, of the City of Salisbury, accepting donated funds for members of the community for various community betterment projects and amending the FY twenty twenty-one budget to appropriate these donated funds for those projects. Whereas the City of Salisbury has established a kindness commission in order to better the lives of our fellow citizens through acts of kindness and compassion. And whereas Ben's Red Swings is a playground that was created to honor the memory of Benjamin Layton and was constructed by his family, friends, and other members of the Salisbury community. And whereas the city has accepted donations from members of the community who are interested in contributing to the good works of the Kindness Commission in the maintenance and upkeep of Ben's Red Swings Playground. And whereas Dr. Val Nateson, M.D., has provided a donation in the amount of three hundred dollars for the Kindness Commission. And whereas the First Shore Federal Savings and Loan Association has provided a donation in the amount of one hundred dollars for the Kindness Commission. And whereas William and Brenda Beecham have provided a donation in the amount of fifty dollars for Ben's Red Swings Playground. And whereas the appropriations next necessary to execute the purpose of these donations must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths of the council of the City of Salisbury, now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city accepts the affirmation donated funds to be spent on the program and/or project for which the donation was made. Be it further ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, the city's fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget being as hereby amended as follows: increase the donation's other kindness commission revenue account by four hundred, increase the kindness commission's operating expense account by four hundred, increase the donation's other playground maintenance revenue account by fifty dollars, and increase the playground maintenance expense account by fifty dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
No comment.
Ms. Jackson?
Wonderful contribution to Ben's Red Swing and to the city, and I thank all that donated. I thank them very much for it.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Blake?
Uh, just a lovely project and asset to our community. No other comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
Uh, I just want to thank the members who, of the community who donated, so.
And I too wish to thank the groups that donated. Very much appreciated. At this time, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two six two one for the first reading, please signify by saying aye. All those in- Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Resolution number two six two one for the first reading is approved. The vote was five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two six two two for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Jackson? Mrs. Gregory? Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Federal Emergency Management Agency for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of one hundred nine thousand, twenty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents and to approve a budget amendment to the FY twenty twenty grant fund to appropriate these funds for offsetting COVID- nineteen expenses. Whereas on March thirteenth, twenty twenty, the President of the United States declared that the ongoing coronavirus disease, two thousand and nineteen pandemic, was of sufficient severity and magnitude to warrant an emergency declaration for all states, tribes, territories, and the District of Columbia pursuant to Section five oh one B of the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act. And whereas in accordance with Section five oh two of the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act, eligible emergency protective measures taken to respond to the COVID- nineteen emergency at the discretion or guidance of public health officials may be reimbursed under Category B of the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA Public Assistance Program. And whereas the City of Salisbury incurred substantial expenses preparing for and responding to the COVID- nineteen pandemic. And whereas the City of Salisbury submitted a project grant application to FEMA for funding to offset expenses related to the acquisition of personal protective equipment, known as PPE, purchased in response to the COVID- nineteen crisis. And whereas FEMA funding assistance will be provided to the city at a seventy-five percent federal cost share rate. And whereas the city has been awarded reimbursement from FEMA in the amount of one hundred nine thousand, twenty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents for COVID- nineteen related expenses, as reflected in the attached exhibits. And whereas Section seven dash two nine of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the city council. And whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths of the council of the City of Salisbury, now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Federal Emergency Management Agency- with the Federal Emergency Management Agency to accept grant funds in the amount of one hundred nine thousand two hundred forty-six dollars and eighty-two cents. And be it further ordained that the city's fiscal year twenty twenty grant fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Increase the DHS FEMA revenue account by one hundred nine thousand twenty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents and increase the SFD medical expense account by one hundred nine dollars, uh, one hundred nine thousand twenty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
None.
Ms. Jackson?
None.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Mrs. Gregory?
None.
Bearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two six two two for the first reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number two six two two for the first reading passes by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two six two three for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Blake, Mr. Boda? Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Wycomico County Health Department for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of thirty-six thousand three hundred forty-two dollars and ninety cents and to approve a budget amendment to the FY twenty twenty grant fund to appropriate these funds for offsetting COVID nineteen expenses. Whereas the City of Salisbury incurred substantial expenses preparing for and responding to the COVID nineteen pandemic. And whereas the Wycomico County Health Department received a direct allocation of funds through the coronavirus aid relief and economic security cares act for COVID nineteen related expenditures. And whereas the city expects to receive reimbursement from the Wycomico County Health Department in the amount of thirty-six thousand three hundred forty-two dollars and ninety cents for COVID nineteen related expenditures as reflected in the attached exhibit. And whereas section seven dash two nine of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the city council. And whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of forfeit to the council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that Mayor Jacob R. Day is authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Wycomico County Health Department to accept grant funds in the amount of thirty-six thousand three hundred forty-two dollars and ninety cents. And be it further ordained that the city's fiscal year twenty twenty grant fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Increase the Wycomico County Health Department revenue account by thirty-six thousand three hundred forty-two dollars and ninety cents and increase the Salisbury Fire Department Medical Expense Account by thirty-six thousand three hundred forty-two dollars and ninety cents.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
None.
Ms. Jackson?
None.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Mrs. Gregory?
None.
Bearing no questions or comments, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two six two three for the first reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number two six two three for the first reading has been approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two six two four for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson? Ms. Blake? Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend chapter eight point one one, the Fire Prevention Code, sections point oh two oh, point oh four oh and point oh six oh of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code by adding new permits that are required to be obtained from the fire marshal, removing the reference to the International Building Code, removing the housing and community development in section eight point one one point oh four oh and establishing a timeframe for submitting inspections in eight point one one point oh six oh with third-party inspection requirements. Whereas the ongoing application, administration, enforcement of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code demonstrates the need for periodic review, evaluation and amendment. And whereas the City of Salisbury adopts the state fire prevention code with local amendments. And whereas the City of Salisbury desires to establish and list the specific permit permits required from the fire marshal's office. And whereas the City of Salisbury desires to collect all third-party inspection reports through a vendor system data collection company within fifteen days of the inspection date, now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury that chapter eight point one one, the Fire Prevention Code, sections point oh two oh, point oh four oh and point oh six oh of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code are hereby amended as follows. Under chapter, um, eight point one one, entitled the Fire Prevention Code, under eight point one one point oh two oh, amendments to the State Fire Prevention Code. The, uh, it says the National Fire Protection Association Life Safety Code one oh one as referenced, comma amended and promulgated by the State Fire Prevention Commission is adopted by the city with the following local amendments. Amendments. Number one, the fire prevention, uh, fees shall be established by resolution of the city council. Under B, the National Fire Protection Protections Association Fire Code one, as referenced, amended and promulgated by the State Fire Prevention Commission is adopted by the city with the following local amendments. One, the Board of Appeals shall be the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals. And two, any person who fails to comply with the provisions of this code or who fails to carry out an order made pursuant to this code or violates any condition attached to a permit, approval or certificate may be subject to a municipal infraction not to exceed five hundred dollars each day the violation continues. Under sub paragraph three, it reads failure to comply with the time limits of an abatement notice or other corrective action issued by the authority having jurisdiction may result in municipal infractions not to exceed five hundred dollars for each day the violation continues. And the, uh, authority having jurisdiction shall have authority to, um, evacuate, vacate and order such building or structure to be closed to the public. Under paragraph four, uh, we're going to include an X E, an X E entitled firefighter safety building marking system with local amendments. And under A for local amendments to an X E are added, sub paragraph E, one point three, point six, point one, the following letters shall be used to indicate special hazards assigned to the center of the Maltese cross. And they are identified as sub paragraph A, F floor hazard. B is R stands for roof hazard. C W stands for wall hazard. D H stands for holes in structure. E S will signify stairs compromised. And F, uh, the letter M will be maze-like confusing layout. And under, uh, small double I, under add to E, one point three point six point two, where the authority having jurisdiction determines the conditions to be severe enough to limit all operational activity to a defensive mode only, a red X shall be placed through the center section of the Maltese cross. Under sub paragraph five, replace subsection, uh, ten point ten point one permits with ten point ten point one, uh, open burning prohibited. Open burning other than cooking and recreational fires compliant with the provisions of this code is prohibited. And under, uh, six, uh, we already had letters A through, uh, J, but we are adding, uh, K, which will read installation, modification or removal from service of any private fire hydrant. We're adding L, which designates fireworks displays, and we're adding M to store, transport, on-site, dispense, use or handle hazardous materials. Subsection C is being eliminated. Under eight point one one point oh four oh inspections, it will read, "To the fullest extent permitted by law, the fire department is authorized to enter and examine at all reasonable times any building, structure, marine vessel, vehicle or premises for the purpose of making fire safety inspections." One exception to that is the one and two family dwelling unit. Under B, uh, personnel responsible for administering and enforcing this code shall be trained to a minimum level of fire inspector one in accordance with the National Fire Protection Code. And C, personnel will periodically inspect all buildings and structures as herein set forth in this code on a schedule derived from life safety and fire risk assessment. Under eight point one one point oh six oh, third-party inspections, a report of all third-party inspections required by this code shall be submitted to the fire marshal's office for review within fifteen days of the inspection date. A third-party or vendor system data collection agency or company shall be utilized for the collection of completed third-party inspection reports and associated collection filing fees. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
None.
Ms. Jackson?
None.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Mrs. Gregory?
None.
Bearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two six two four for the first reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Res- uh, ordinance number two six two four for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two six two five for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda? And Ms. Jackson? Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend the fee schedule for FY twenty twenty-one. Whereas ordinance twenty-five ninety-five set fees for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And whereas ordinance number twenty-six twenty-four amended chapter eight point one one, the Fire Prevention Code, section point oh two oh, to include permit requirements for the plan review and associated inspections of any fireworks displays. And whereas the fire department desires to establish fees for the plan review and associated inspections of any fireworks displays. And whereas the fire department recommends that the attached fee schedule be added to ordinance twenty-five ninety-five, so the fees may be collected in FY twenty twenty-one. Now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury that the fee amounts included in the attached exhibit one, amended FY twenty twenty-one fee schedule are adopted by the City of Salisbury. And the amount set forth therein shall supersede the prior corresponding fee amounts prescribed by the Salisbury Municipal Code until one or more of the said fees are subsequently amended. And the, uh, if you look at the exhibit one, it indicates that fireworks display includes planned review and associated inspections for any fireworks show and indicates a fee of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
None.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Ms. Jackson?
None.
Mrs. Gregory?
None.
Bearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two six two five for the first reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Ordinance number two six two five for the first reading has passed with a vote of five to zero. Ms. Glance, do we have any requests for comments at this time from the public?
Not that I see in the chat, but if anybody's interested in speaking, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you. Ms. Glance, acting mayor. Comments are for the good of the order?
Um, just thank you all for your continued support. And it was an exciting day today, renaming, uh, ceremonial renaming for Indigenous Peoples' Day. So, uh, I'm proud of the work we're doing here and I can continue to bring light to issues that have been in the shadows for a very long time.
Thank you, Ms. Glance. Council members, uh, comments, Mr. Boda?
Uh, just want to remind everybody to keep supporting your local restaurants and businesses. Uh, they're still, uh, trying to keep things going. Uh, and I want to thank Colin Zimmerman for being here because I think he's our new, uh, Sarah Rain. Uh, so my question for him is, can he bake as good as Sarah Rain? That's the question. So, uh, jury's still out. And thank you for Kelly Powers from, uh, Delmar Vannell for, uh, sticking around. And Jimmy Gladwell for sticking to the whole meeting. Good job.
Colin, do you have any thing you'd like to say? I guess he doesn't want to challenge Sarah's cooking. Okay, um, Ms. Jackson, any comments?
Um, only thing I want to say is don't forget to vote. November the third, that's all.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
Um, great job Salisbury on just recognizing all people. And that's very great. I love Salisbury, I love living here. Um, just if you're healthy enough, please give blood, uh, stay healthy and definitely vote. Please vote November third.
Thank you. Gregory?
Uh, just want to reiterate, you know, folks, continue wearing your masks, please. Um, and practicing social distancing. Uh, and I'd like to reiterate what everybody else said, just a reminder. Tomorrow is the deadline to register to vote and you've got until, I believe, the twentieth to request a ballot. So if you don't feel comfortable going to the polls on election day, you can always drop them in drop boxes at either the, uh, civic center or the board of elections. So please make your voice heard, register, request your ballot, vote.
Get up, uh, on all of those comments. I do have to apologize to three people. After the consent agenda, uh, I normally congratulate and thank those people who were appointed to the board. So at this time, let me thank, uh, Mary Buffington, Dr. Neil Carey and David Shide for their reappointments and also thank them for their past service. It's really, it's really good. And like we always say, uh, there's nothing like the people of Salisbury to step up when they have to. Uh, they always do and they always will. So if there's nothing else for the good of the order, uh, thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.